Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the December 28th, 2020 Town Council meeting. I'd like to call to order. The first item is the call is to get the approval of the minutes from December 14th. And I'd like to see if anybody has any discussion here before we start from the council? Any discussion? Anybody from the public? Seeing none. Can I have a motion, please?
I move.
Thank you, Shirley. Bobby, had your hand up?
Oh, second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
One abstention.
Mike was not here, so welcome back, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
Next item is managers' report, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two quick items tonight. Just to remind the public, our trash routes will be changing shortly on January 18th. Shortly, you'll see signs up around town to remind people to go online or to go to Channel 2. They've been kind of cycling. If you're really bored at home, you can watch. It's almost about six seconds a page, which doesn't sound like a really long time, but it's forever when you're looking at the TV screen. So they're on Channel 2 and 1301, as well as our website at www.cumberlandmaine.com. And most of the town is changing. If you're moving at all, you're moving up a day. So if your trash route was on Wednesday, it might be on Thursday. And the reason for this is because of the size of the town. We've grown quite a bit. If you've been aware of trash routes around town and seen the trucks at seven and eight o'clock at night, that's why they've been out there trying to keep up. Our routes are too big. Typically, we've had five and 550 is a manageable one-day pickup. And some of these routes are now up to 700-plus a day, and they just, they can't keep up. Also, what's changed this year is the truck has changed. It's a side loader, which basically has the recycling and trash components on the side of the truck. And it looks like in the future, it'll be handled by one operator. So if you're looking for the next Mr. Universe, these guys will be auditioning for that, because these guys are going to have some very stressful days. Most of us used to see the guys two per truck, and now it might be, in many cases, one per truck in the future. So more to come on that. The other thing, I just want to report to the council, we'll be advertising through Jobs and M.E. and Maine Municipal for a senior accountant position. I have shared with the council, I understand the rhetoric about a hiring freeze for positions. This is a position that was vacated earlier this fall, late this summer. I feel, as does our finance director and the finance committee as well, that this is a much-needed and necessary position. So we all understand the budget's still coming up. We all understand a lot could change, and no position is guaranteed. But this, to me, is one of those positions we can't do without. And we're going to move forward to fill that vacancy, just so that we could have, you know, our financial house in order and keep it in order. And that's really critical when you're operating a $30 million budget. So really want to be careful with that. So that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman, and I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Bill. The next item is a public discussion. Public discussion is limited, is for comments that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes per person. Public discussion and topics will be brought up later with here tonight at Town Council for discussion. Does anybody from the public want to come up? Seeing none. Thank you. Next item is to update the Rhine's Forest Management Plan as recommended by the Lands and Conservation Commission. Is Mike going to do that? Sally's going to do it? Okay. Thank you, Sally. Thanks for being here this evening.
I don't really have a lot to say about this. We have, you have already approved an earlier version of the Rhine's Forest Management Plan. This is just a update to the plan because we have added two additional parcels to the property. Well, three, actually. The additional, the Rhines, the second Rhines purchase, the gift from the Godso family, and then the gift from the Milliken family. So the substance of the plan is essentially the same. We've just added in the reference that those are now part of the Rhine's Forest. And so we updated the plan with those things in mind. And just maybe a couple of other things to note is that we, in addition to this general management plan, which talks about the nature of the forest, what people can and can't do in the forest, some of the history of it, we also, there will be an accompanying updated forest management plan. And we, with our new town forester, well, he's been with us now for a year, Paul Lervie, he's working right now on doing a timber inventory of those additional parcels. And after he completes that, then we'll be taking a fresh look at the forest management plan and updating that plan. And so this general management plan just references that and says that will be updated, and it'll be updated on around a 10-year time period interval. So I think that pretty much covers what we need to say, unless anybody has any questions.
Mike, do you have anything to add? Okay. Sally, thank you so much. Does anybody from the council have any questions of Sally?
No, she already answered the only question I had about the updated forest management plan. Yeah.
Bill?
I think, Mr. Chairman, the committee that worked with the land trust last time to update the overriding document over this probably should be reconvened and get back to work with, it's more of a housekeeping exercise. As you remember, because we didn't want to mix up the grant that we got with the purchase of the Rhines, we just left it alone. That was included, Rhines 1 and Rhines 2, we'll call it, are okay. But the Godso piece and the Milliken piece are still kind of not part of the conservation easement. And it wouldn't take a lot to pull that together, but it might be worth a look. And I think, I know Mike and George were both on that last time. I don't know if you were, Tom.
I was, yeah.
So it'd be good to bring the band back together to see if we can get this document updated and cleaned up a little bit. We did it for the original purchase when we went to the second piece, but pieces three and four are still hanging out there. And that's up to you guys if you want to do that, which I think was the intent of the gift to the town.
I think we should. We should do that. Yeah, we should, yeah.
Okay, Mike, with that?
Yeah, that's certainly something that the forestry subcommittee is looking forward to moving forward on. And we had been advised to wait until we got the management plan updated and all the different parcels connected. So it would be really great to see that piece finished as well.
So we'll work on that and get some dates out to you, to Mike and George and Tom, and see if we can pull that together in the next few months. And it'll come back to the full council for a vote.
Terrific.
The one other thing that I might mention is that, like many land trust properties, town properties, since COVID has kicked in, is we're seeing a lot more use out there. I mean, a lot more use. And so one of the things that we are going to be doing is we've been working very closely, the forestry subcommittee and the trail subcommittee have been working really closely on trying to upgrade some of our trails so that they can handle more traffic a little bit better. And that's an ongoing process, and we're continuing to work really hard on that. But at some point, we may actually, we're also going to be looking, taking a fresh look at, are there certain trails where certain kinds of activities might be restricted at least certain times of the year? And so I don't know that, that's something, you know, we're not ready to make that recommendation at this point, but it is something we're going to be looking at.
Thank you, Sally, so much.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions of Sally? No? Okay, good. We're all set. Thank you, Sally. The next item is to, whoa, 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 can I slow down here? I'm going to, any comments from the public? Seeing none? I'd ask for a motion.
I move to update the Rhine's Forest Management Plan as recommended by the Lands and Conservation Committee.
Thank you. Allison, second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. The next item is to hear a report from the Social Justice Committee. My notes say to turn over to Allison, but I think Shirley, you're going to speak up?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a preface before Allison kicks it off. But I just wanted to sort of let the public know that this is, what we're talking about tonight is really a process, not any real decisions about what outcomes might be, but just the process to look at a couple of things in our community, how to have conversations about social justice and injustices, and also to look at our policies within the town and our wider community that might enable or disable access to equity among certain populations. And it is not our intent. We've gotten, we haven't even made this proceed or this public yet, and we've gotten a little pushback already. And one of the comments was a thank you to another community member about pushing the conversations to places that feel divisive or assumptive. And that is not the route that I believe this council or this committee intends to go. We do not intend to be divisive and assumptive. I wrote down for me what my intentions are. My intentions are that our work be productive, that our work be inclusive, that our work be positive and respectful, and that we do this work with open minds and open hearts. And with that said, those will be, I hope that sets a tone for some of the work we're going to talk about tonight. I also want to publicly thank Allison. She has done an amazing amount of work on this, getting it organized to present to us tonight.
Thank you. Allison?
All right. I told them PowerPoint's my happy place. This is no big deal. So with that, Mike, Shirley, and I want to kind of set the ground. So first wanted to, a little bit of Shirley's tee-up is, yeah, please come, as you can see, is really being clear on what this committee's objective is. And so two words that can sometimes be viewed as synonymous that very much are not are equality and equity. And so equality is providing the same service or following the same process for all people. And that's not our objective here. Our objective here is around equity, which means we're providing the required resource so that all people have the same possibility of achieving the objective. So I think that's really important for all of us to kind of ground right there, is that the objective here is around equity. And to that end, right, so we're focused on providing the required resource so that all people have the same possibility of achieving the objective and for our purposes, related to these two items, right? And we are an employer, so ensuring equitable employment and recruitment practices and ensuring equitable provision of town services to all Cumberland citizens. Is it not coming through? Oh, thank you, sir. And really, kind of with that, kind of some of what Shirley was talking is that our policies, our decisions, the way we do things show who we value and what we don't. And so, again, the committee's objective is around, related to the municipality, ensuring equitable employment and recruitment practices, and ensuring equitable provisions of town services to all Cumberland citizens. Questions, comments on committee objective?
I think that's a good way to define it.
Okay. From a structure standpoint, just to kind of make sure everyone's on the same page. So right now, it is Councillor Eads, myself, and Councillor Dory King. We are kind of, as the committee was meeting last week, and we look at kind of how we are proposing this process. We are probably going to need one more active councillor to be part of our committee, Mr. Vale, or anyone else. And then you'll see, kind of, community engagement will be really critical as we move through the process as well. But kind of the, the kind of leadership group in the committee as we kind of work out the details and really drive this forward, really looking at this committee needing to be before of us. And then, again, you can see, kind of, or we will see, as we move into kind of small group workshops, that becomes important as we need leaders for those conversations. All right. So what we're going to go through is a proposal that is a three-phased approach. Phase one is really focused on the seven of us and the department heads of the town. And the objective here is some workshops that would establish common language that we would be using. And just kind of, as I started, the difference between equity and equality, I think, is a great example of we can use words thinking we all understand and are meaning the same thing. And so it seemed really important, as this committee was discussing, is really grounding ourselves in what do we mean when we say? And what is the intent of certain words? And what is that common meaning that we're going to communicate when we're talking about things? And then also, kind of baseline, communication rules of engagement as well. We're not sitting here thinking we're all going to agree at all times. So really having some training around conflict resolution and things like that so that we can have productive communications as a council and work through when we're not always coming at it, seeing eye to eye. So we're envisioning it being two separate workshops. We were thinking we would conduct them prior to the council meetings, if that worked, just knowing that we all have those dates on our calendars. But that is not set in stone, but that is kind of what we were envisioning. The first one, while we're still in discussions with the organization I have up here, the Maine Intercultural Communication Consultants, I participated in a training that that organization did through the Maine Municipal Association, and I thought it was very well done. And I think the topic would be really good in this kind of grounding of terms and definitions. And so this training would be, when I did it, it was an hour and a half. So it's not, you know, some marathon training. It was just an hour and a half session focused on kind of privileges and identities, and what does that mean? And how does that manifest itself? And then, kind of, what does that mean for others as you're kind of coming together? And then the second workshop, being around communication and conflict resolution. Kind of, again, anticipating that that first session may cause some feelings and things to stir up, that it seemed good timing to then have, okay, let's have a conversation as a team, as a leadership team, to say, okay, how do we work through that? What are we feeling? How do we communicate through that? And we had, time out?
No one at home can see your slides.
Come on!
It gets, it gets back.
Start over again, Allison.
Oh, God! Can I just hit replay?
It gets, it gets back to the background and the color.
Oh, they can't, they literally can't see that.
It's all, they're all washed out. And what I'm hoping is that we can quickly... Now that'll work.
I see it on the screen, on the TV.
That's, if you look at the TV at home, no one can see any of the, any of the text. So what I will try to do is stay ahead of you. And keep going. But I'm just worried that all of this... Another thing, you can't, I can't see what I'm doing when...
Brenda, you ought to go out there and help him.
I was going to say, he's doing a great job. Very proud of you. Just hit, yeah.
Talk among yourselves if you've got anything to share about the holidays. While I try to keep up with this.
Well, maybe I'll just finish that thought, and then when the slide comes up. So we had been having some conversations with family and community mediation. We have some members of our community that are on that board. And so they had reached out, and so we'd had some conversations with them. But once we kind of moved from an active mediation conversation and more about a proactive training on how do you then work through, kind of, not, work through challenging conversations, that's not really what they do. They kind of train folks to facilitate a challenging conversation. But they do have folks that are part of their membership that in private practice do provide trainings that would be more in line with what we are looking for. So I talked to her, Joyce is the president, and so she was going to kind of work through some of those contact names and would be sending those to me sometime this week. So we should, in pretty short order, be able to move forward with that. Boom.
So are, are you where, are you here?
Yep.
Okay. Are you clicking these?
Nope, I didn't. Did you?
I just didn't.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
Cool. So there it is. That's phase, that's our proposal for kind of phase one, which as, as the leaders of the community, it seemed appropriate that we kind of get on the same page to start. Phase two would be community workshops. So similar objective to the, to the town leadership sessions that we would participate in phase one. And really, kind of looking at that as saying, that's really imperative to ensuring productive conversations as we move into kind of the public, task force, public kind of work, the real work. That's phase three. And our proposal is to look at those as kind of multiple workshops through the winter. And our hope is to be able to support these happening, both in-person as well as virtual sessions, kind of not knowing where the pandemic will continue to progress. And we know we have vaccines coming, but still wanting to ensure that anyone who wants to participate in those sessions is able. And so as we're looking at resources to support this, having an ability to do it virtually is important to us. So that's phase two. And then phase three is, we'll call it, kind of, phase one and phase two are the prep phases and kind of getting everyone to the same page. And then phase three is really where we get into the meat of it. And so kind of summarizing it as our equity review, the task forces, and our ongoing efforts. So first part being, we've got to kind of identify where our blind spots are, right? Blind spot is the gap between intent and the impact. I think one thing the committee wanted to be really clear on is, don't, really don't believe and are confident that there aren't active practices in the town or an intent to kind of have injustice or to not be serving the full community. But that, again, the definition of a blind spot is you don't know what you're doing. And so kind of to be able to identify those blind spots, our two kind of thoughts are, number one, through community feedback, right? We've talked about in prior council meetings, some of the communication committee work. We had the thought that we would use those surveys as a way to solicit anonymous feedback around and identify areas and help us identify areas where we may not know that we're not fully serving the community or ideas, even if it's not personally, that they can see that we're not fully servicing the community or being open to all people. And then also, there are organizations in this state that will conduct a racial bias audit. This is something I just learned about today. So don't know exactly what that would look like and how much it costs and where they go with it, but looking at your employment practices. And so it would be more of on the employment and processes side versus kind of the basic municipal services. And then, once we kind of have that feedback, it's really about forming what we're seeing as small group task force. So they would, we would look at prioritizing the blind spots. I think we would be naive to think we will be able to do everything for every one, but really seeing what's bubbling to the top, what is within our control as a council, as a town. Prioritize, so prioritize those blind spots. And then in these small groups, about recommending the changes, right? That we want this to be a productive process so that we're not sitting here saying, we did a great job in identifying where our blind spots are. The goal of this is to actually recommend the changes, the steps that would then close those blind spots. And really just looking at this as an opportunity, again, for the community to get involved, most specifically in this step. And it seemed important at this point, when folks would know what they would be working on, right? That at this point, you would know, hey, we're going to look at specifically hiring practices, or we're going to look about our zoning rules, or things like that. And if you have a background or a specific interest in that, you could specifically ask to be on that task force. And so really looking at this as an opportunity for diverse perspectives, problem-solving approach, personalities, all of it, and really seeing as that achieving a better recommendation for the town as a whole. And then one great idea, I think, came out of our last committee conversation from Councillor Eads, was that it doesn't stop here, right? That another outcome is, how are we going to establish? Or what should that repeatable review be as new or evolving blind spots happen? That we can't sit here and say, this one-time process and one-time review is going to solve everything, and then we're done. It is about empowering the community to continue to bring both the blind spots and the solutions. And so we want to make sure we're also coming to this at the end with, what does that process look like? Is it a continuing subcommittee? Is it whatever it may be? But that, that's also an outcome of this work. I mentioned it throughout the slides, so these are more just kind of footnoting slides. So really, right now, for the mediation and conflict resolution, these are the two resources that we kind of have on our list. But really looking at that, kind of, coming out of today's conversations, we'll have more specific to our needs around kind of communication and conflict resolution. And then, these are some of the other resources relative to kind of the diversity training, identities, privilege, all of that part of it. As you know, this work started with signing on to a pledge by the Portland Chamber of Commerce. And as part of that, they kind of said, and as you pledge with us on this against social injustice, that they would be supporting it through some trainings. We went on the website just a couple of weeks ago. They do have the 21-day challenge, which I know Freeport's actually offering, if you kind of would like or feel the need to be part of a community going through at the same time. Freeport does have a 21 anti-racism challenge starting in mid-January. But you can go on to the Portland Chamber of Commerce site and kind of do it on your own as well. The trainings part of it, they don't have anything posted. So while we're hopeful that at no additional cost or minimal cost, Councillor Vale, that we'd be able to tap into that, at this point, they don't have anything up specifically that we could tap into. I mentioned Maine Intercultural Communication Consultants. They're right in Portland. We've also kind of looked at the Holocaust and Human Rights Center of Maine. I looked at the Maine Humanities Council today. Both of those organizations are doing great work, but it's not exactly kind of what we're looking for in the training. It's a great, kind of like the 21-day challenge. I think if you're looking to educate yourself about these topics, kind of in general and challenge your thought process and kind of your perspective, they're great and have some great trainings that are actually, or sessions that are happening, um, just starting in January. But again, wasn't, wasn't exactly kind of what we were looking for here. And then Cook Ross is a, is a very large consulting firm. Um, but they actually consulted with my private employer and I've done some really great trainings that my employer, employer's been doing. And so, I think, you know, it may be worth reaching out and seeing if they have anything specific that would, would be in budget and also maybe very topical for what we're looking for.
Or maybe they have a benefactor who would work with communities and, you know, pay for community work.
Exactly. Um, and then this is a summary of kind of the timing. Sorry, that's a little, I forgot to do this last slide. So, I think it's tiny for probably folks at home. But again, this is just a summary of what we talked about just specifically around timeline. Um, we don't have a budget as of, as of yet, um, or numbers to even in bring to you. Um, as again, we're trying to balance, hey, let's leverage networks that we're part of, organizations, associations and those, um, trainings that we can tap into. We do know that I would say the mediation, which was a full day session over a couple of days, was I think around three grand. So, you know, I think for our workshops, I don't think it would be unreasonable to say we're somewhere in the $1,500 range for both our workshops. But again, nothing, no real numbers, but just to kind of get our heads started to wrap around some things. That's what I have for you, that's what we have for you today. Did I miss?
No, everything's a home run. Any questions from the council?
Great, great job, really.
I really feel that's the same.
Really impressed. I had a chance to, just great job. Think while you were talking there for just a second and, you know, uh, the equity piece is a, is and can be a challenge for all of us to, to sit back and think how that might change. Certainly, you know, what, what do we do as a community to, to invite people then who, who may look different than us? There's, there's lots of challenges here in front of us.
Well, there's a plus one here. Are you volunteering? Is that what I'm hearing?
Are you telling me I look a little weird?
We've been impressed by your interest.
Yes. Oh, oh, I would be happy to be the plus one.
The committee members have been impressed by your interest.
Okay, we recruited.
And your lunchtime phone calls with questions and suggestions.
Anything else?
Anything we, we missed that you thought we were going to cover or?
I think it's a great superstructure and it's brilliantly done. And, um, the outline is as good an outline as you possibly could have. I worry a little about the social engineering. And I worry about whether we're trying to look for results that we want instead of drawing toward the, the result that you're gonna get. And I don't think that we should, from a governmental point of view, we run the risk of alienating people who don't want any part of this. And the truth of the matter is, we, those that don't should be encouraged also. We're looking for consensus, we're not looking for, we're looking for a consensus over, around a, a, an equitable result. And it's, just the, the agonizing over definitions and words and use of words gives me the heat jeeps a little bit, but it's a brilliant start.
Thanks, George. Ron, you got anything?
Well done, you put some time into this, so.
It was good, while they're talking, I just keep typing.
There's no, there's no action required out here tonight, but.
Tom, what I'm a little bit afraid of is, um, not going down the same path that the school went down. And I think what was missed there, even though the meetings were televised and they put their agendas out there and everything else, is that the message didn't get out to a big part of the community. And, um, with you guys putting a communication committee together, I think we should learn from that and figure out a way to better engage the community before the big, big stuff starts to roll out. Because I think that this is going to be not easy. I think this is gonna be one of the most difficult things this council has ever undertaken. And I think what'll happen is it's, you're gonna peel one layer off and another layer and another layer, you're just gonna keep going. So, um, two recommendations is that we, we fund it adequately and that we put a very strong, uh, influence on communication. This venue that we're in right now, the Channel Two and all the television, that's not gonna cut it. It's just not gonna cut it, nor is the, the streaming that we do. It doesn't get anywhere near the penetration that we need into the community. So, I think we're gonna have to do, uh, a lot more surveys. I think we're gonna have to rely on the crier a lot more. I think we're gonna have to rely on mailings and postcards. And basically, you know, my, my billboards around town to make sure that people get the message and go to the website and come to the library or town hall to get the latest document and report. I would also recommend that you as a council, think about, um, using the contingency budget that you established for things like this. That, you know, maybe you basically allow the committee to go at $5,000 at, at a time and then come back to the council and give them a, an update of what they've done, what they've spent the money on, and then allocate the next portion if you're comfortable. Because you can't just keep coming back to the council every month and asking for money and $1,500 for this. And, and after a while, it just becomes kind of a mess. So, uh, we'll keep the accounting in a special form, but I would really appreciate your authorization that we think about, uh, giving, uh, this committee at least a $5,000 of seed money to start. And then, uh, once a month, come back and see what's on the horizon that you might have to fund it at a higher increment. Because this isn't gonna be done for free and these, these speakers aren't for free and the mailings aren't gonna be free. So, it's gonna cost real money, you know, and it's, it's not going to be cheap. And it's gonna be something that I don't want to hamstring us because we've got to get the message out this time and we've got to do a better job communicating. So, that's where I'm coming from.
And just one, you made me think of something to, relative to what we're proposing here, and you've said it, that these, these facilitators and folks, they are in high demand at this point. We were kind of like, hey, we're gonna be able to say we need you in January, February. They're booked out for a couple of months. So, what we've proposed here is a proposed timeline. The finance committee met tonight on the budget calendar. We're also sensitive to that timing. So, again, what we're proposing is kind of what we're working towards relative to timeline. But some of this is gonna be when we're able to actually get the folks that we want and we're not gonna sacrifice quality for kind of just speed, for the sake of, of speed. So, I meant to point that out too, that I think we were hoping like, oh, we're just gonna, we need you in a couple of weeks. And, um, they're, they're booked out kind of further. Not surprising, but at the same time, surprising.
So, do you need a motion from us?
For the budget?
Well, just your feedback and, and if, if, if people are comfortable with that, we can do something different. But I, I'm just afraid that, you know, I, I hate to do the stop-start stuff. You know, the committee starts getting some momentum, they need to continue and they need to work forward. So, I, I just, I just wanted to put it out there and trying to be as transparent as possible. I think communications is gonna be a crucial part of this whole.
How much did we put into that contingency budget?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand, okay.
I'm a new member of the committee, I'm not making the motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we need one?
These are those two guys down there.
Okay.
So, you're looking for a motion for the five thousand?
Five thousand, yes.
Oh, that's what you're looking for. I'm looking here, where's the motion?
You have to make it up.
Just make it up.
I'll move that we, um, allocate the potential of up to 5,000 for this stage of the social justice committees', um, consideration.
From the, you're, you're okay with the contingent, from the contingency budget? Okay, thank you.
Ron, you got a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda? Thank you. Good work, very good work.
And I didn't know if you had any public discussion tonight.
He has some resources.
Uh, thanks, Tom. Steve Moriarty, 12 Oak Street, uh, here in Cumberland. I'm your state representative in the Maine House of Representatives in Augusta. That was a terrific report and you certainly set forth for yourselves a very challenging and demanding task. And I'm encouraged to see that you are about to undertake it. I'm just taking advantage of this moment to come to the podium to let you know that, uh, I am, uh, I'm appointed as a member of the Judiciary Committee in the legislature, which is, uh, the primary committee that has jurisdiction over anything related to civil rights, social justice or topics of that nature. So, if as you, uh, get into your work, you need to know anything from me about what's pending in, uh, in Augusta in terms of legislation, how it's, uh, how it's faring and so forth, or if you need reports from me from my perspective on pending legislation, I'd be glad to help out. Although I understand that primarily you're focused here on the local scene. Just wanted to be able to let everybody know that I'm on that committee that, you know, sort of has a lot of overlap with what you're gonna be talking about.
Uh, Steve, when are the bills gonna start getting printed? Or at least the titles are gonna start getting printed?
That's a good question, Mike. I was in touch with the reviser's office today and was told that, uh, over 2,000 bills have been submitted. Uh, most of them are gonna be, uh, have got to be finalized with signatures from the sponsors next week. And only then can they be printed and circulated and assigned to committees. My understanding is the committees are gonna get their assignments early in January and start meeting virtually. So, it's gonna be a couple of weeks yet before we know, uh, exactly what the lay of the land is. And I should also say, among those 2,000 bills are probably a lot of duplicates because they made no effort, uh, under the time constraints to sort of see how many bills said the same thing. But that will be done as things progress. And a lot of them will be culled out because they are essentially duplicates.
Steve, we're very fortunate to have you.
Well, thank you, Tom.
Very fortunate. Any, any questions to Steve while he's up here?
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. The next item is to, uh, hold a public hearing date to consider and act on a license for the Cumberland House of Pizza. Mr. Town Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the next three items before you are liquor licenses. Uh, staff recommends the same for each of those items, just to let you know. We are recommending approval for each of them. And those are the Cumberland House of Pizza, the Flannel Shirt Food Company, or Cumberland Food Company, doing businesses Cumberland Food Company, and, uh, basically, uh, Louis' Grill. So, uh, we have positive recommenda, uh, recommendations for each of those items in front of you.
Any questions of the Town Manager?
Can we do all three of them, Tom, at once or we gotta do them?
We can, yeah. Mike, you wanna take it?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the liquor license renewal for Cumberland House of Pizza. That is legislation 20-116. 20-117, I move to approve the liquor license renewal for Flannel Shirt Food Company, LLC, doing business as the Cumberland Food Company. And legislation, uh, 20-118, I move to approve the liquor license renewal for Louis' Grill.
Thank you, Mike. Second by Shirley. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda? Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
The next item is, um, to appoint, um, John Brushwine as the tax assessor for the period of January 1st, 2000, 2021 through December 31st, 2023. Mr. Town Manager?
Uh, Mr. Chair, our charter requires that the assessor be appointed by the town council. He is a direct employee to you by our charter. I oversee his day-to-day work and, uh, operations, but, uh, he is your direct report. Uh, we are recommending a reappointment of John. I think he's done an outstanding job. Uh, and just a heads up, I forgot to report during manager's report. Uh, he will be before you in January to kind of give you a state of the properties in the town and where we're heading. So, uh, that will be in January. So, um, we are recommending, uh, a, a reappointment of, uh, John Brushwine.
Any questions by the, uh, Town Council? Hearing, none? Do we have a motion?
I move to appoint John Brushwin as tax assessor for the period of January 1st, 2021 through Ja, to December 31st, 2023.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ron, second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda? The next item is to appoint members of the, of the board, members of, of the, of two board and committees. Ron, you wanna take that?
I'm gonna take it.
George, thank you.
I move to reappoint Sally Pierce and Amanda Vigu to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Deb Gray and Sally Pierce to the Aging and Place Committee. Sean Alfreds and Peter Garso to the Board of Assessment Review. Robert Johnson and Mike Swent to the Coastal Waters Commission. Janine Gorham to the Housing Authority. David Young to the Lands and Conservation Commission. Linda Putnam to the Forest Subcommittee. Stephen Fitzgerald to the Trail Subcommittee. Amy Amico. Bill Hanson and Sally Pierce to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Catherine Brooks and James Clifford to the Personnel Appeals Board. Linda Draper, Tom Foley and Eli Rivers to the Prince Memorial Library Advisory Board. Peter Garso and Ralph Fulton to the Shellfish Conservation Commission. And I move to appoint Amanda Billing to the Board of Assessment Review. Matt Grandin to the Lands and Conservation Commission. John Levitt to the Lands and Conservation Forest Subcommittee. Sean Breton to the Lands and Conservation Trail Subcommittee. Brian Sterns to the Lands and Conservation Trail Subcommittee. John Stewart to the Lands and Conservation Trail Subcommittee. And Paul Sokoloff to the Shellfish Conservation Commission. Second.
Second by Ron? All in favor? Thank you. The next item is to, uh, to approve increasing the number of, uh, Prince Memorial Library Board members from eight to eleven, eight to eleven as recommended by the nominating committee. Mr. Town Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, since the nominating committee appointed extra members to this, to this board, the, uh, Prince Memorial Library Board basically, uh, did update their bylaws to do so. So, it does require council action to approve that. Um, when the, uh, library board, when the library was taken over by the town, it, uh, it kept the bylaws that were in place by the Prince Memorial Library at the time. We don't have a lot of committees that have their own bylaws, but this one does. And that's the reason why. Um, no issues to date, but I think, uh, just to make sure that we are just kind of keeping everything, uh, on the up and up. Uh, I, we brought this, uh, before you. Uh, Thomas Bennett, uh, told me about the increase and, uh, Ron and I talked briefly about it. But, uh, everybody's comfortable. There was an extra, uh, Cumberland member. I think there are eight Cumberland members and three North Yarmouth members on the advisory board. So, uh, that's why it's here before you tonight.
Thank you. Any, uh, questions or comments from the council?
Tom, I, as you know, I serve on the library as a library representative for the town council. And I know they have a lot of work in the coming years. They're, they intend to undertake a massive fundraising campaign for... for expansion and improvements to keep that off our tax rolls. So the more people involved, the merrier.
Absolutely. Good point. Anybody else have anything? Thank you, Shirley. Do we have a motion?
I'll make it. I move to approve increasing the number of Prince Memorial Library Board members from eight to eleven, as recommended by the nominating committee.
Thank you, Shirley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ron, second? Any further comments? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. The next item is to hold a public hearing to consider and act on amendments to Chapter 315, zoning, Section 2, purpose, Section 4, word usage definitions, agriculture of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the Planning Board. Mr. Town Manager?
Mr. Chairman, I never let a civil engineer do an electrical engineer's job. So in my attempt to tweak the Zoom meeting of the Planning Board in November, I totally screwed it up. So my bad.
Can I hear that again?
It was brutal. I was trying to fix things so they wouldn't get worse and they got a lot worse quickly. So in our attempt to tweak the Zoom meeting, we didn't get on live until 7:25. The chairman, myself and others felt very strongly that members of the public that tried to get on the Zoom meeting might have just given up after nothing happened after 10 or 15 minutes and walked away. And we felt it too important that all voices should be heard. So we never brought the meeting to order and essentially just pushed the entire agenda till January. That included these three items, the next three items that you have before you. They were not heard by the Planning Board in in December. They will be heard in January. And so that's why the table motion for Items 21, 22, 123, and 124 is here tonight. We expect them to be back before you in January and hope to have the feedback from the Planning Board to you then as well.
Thank you, Bill. Do we have any comments?
I'll give a motion if you want.
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to table Item 20-122, Item 20-123, and Item 20-124.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, George. Further discussion? All in favor? It's been tabled, thank you. The next item is to set a public hearing date of January 11th, 2021, to consider and act on amendments to the Credit Enhancement Agreement and integrative, with with Integrative Center of Maine to add Skyview Viewing, Sky Sky Viewing Holdings LLC. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The TIF Subcommittee met right before the council meeting tonight to discuss this and unanimously approved the amendments to this credit enhancement agreement. The only change is is to basically share the agreement with each other. Previously, it was with entirely with Integrative Health Center of Maine. And now it will be split evenly with 15 Skyview Holdings LLC. So there's no change to anything in related to the TIF districts. It's just that the first floor is the doctor and the the second floor, or depending on where you land in the property, first and second floor, first floor and basement level, I'm not sure. Maybe it is first and second. But they're splitting the building essentially in half and are dividing the credit enhancement agreement in half. So that's all that was, more of a housekeeping item than anything else.
That's terrific. Any questions or comments from the council? Can I have a motion, please?
I moved to set a public hearing date of January 11th to consider and act on amendments to the Credit Enhancement Agreement with Integrative Health Center of Maine and to add 15 Skyview Holdings LLC.
Do we have a second? Ron, second? Further discussion by the council? All in favor? Terrific. Unanimous, Brenda. Next item is new business. Mr. Town Manager?
I am all set for tonight, thank you.
Oh, great. Mike?
Tom, as Chairman of the Finance Committee, have you given any decision what recommendation you'll make to the council on the sale of the North Yarmouth property? What you want, what you, what your thoughts are on doing with the proceeds?
Not sure.
It was basically put into land acquisition reserves. That's where the money will go to when on the closing. The closing hasn't happened yet, so it's several months away.
I, you know, I, and we'll get to it when we get around budget time. But my thought is, you know, I'm I'm still worried about the quiet zones. As I've I've said several times, if the train traffic hadn't increased and people buy property next to the train tracks, I never would be supporting a quiet zone. It is what it is, you move next to the property. But there are many, many homeowners whose quality of life has been uprooted by the increase in train traffic. We now have a a chance to take the proceeds from that and finance the quiet zone. We can do it without raising taxes. We can do it. I don't see us with any big land acquisitions coming up. But I I feel for those people. I mean, I I hear it, I don't mind it, but I'm a mile, a couple of miles away. I think it's time that we give serious consideration of doing something for the people along the train tracks. It's a big part of our community, so. And I'm not, I didn't mean to put you in the spot, Tom. I just didn't know if you guys had had any discussion.
No, we haven't.
When it comes budget time, I'm I'm going to ask that we do that.
Bring it up then.
I will, but I just want to see where you are at. That's all I had on. I'm sorry I missed the last meeting. My best to everyone here in the council, Brenda, Bill, and the people in Cumberland in New Year. Let's hope it's.
Well, thank you.
It is, that is actually made by the past McQuarries. It's organic maple syrup and it's got a cinnamon stick in the middle of it for a little extra taste for your pancakes. Thank you.
Thank you. Shirley?
Thank you, Tom. I'm looking for an update from the manager of, on the rabbit in the town forest. Any updates on that social media sensation? Did you know there was a rabbit in the town forest?
I gave up on social media after a bunch of the posts.
Update on the rabbit?
No rabbit update.
Okay.
Mike, did you show them all?
I want to congratulate you, Mike, on the recognition of Ryan Eadie's on Christmas Day on, for his service in the military and the Air Force. That was very nice.
Yeah, Jenny and I were pretty touched by it.
Yeah, yeah. And then a final thank you to all the citizens in the community who this season went above and beyond with the lights. I drove my mother around on the evening of the 23rd. We went in and out all the streets in Cumberland Center and around. And it seemed like people had gone the extra mile. And my mom, I was dropping her off afterwards and she said, I'm so proud to live here. I'm so proud of Cumberland. So I wanted to share that gratitude with all of you with higher electric bills this month. Thank you.
Thanks, Shirley. Bob?
Well, I don't usually have anything, but I I do have a couple of things tonight. I'd like to acknowledge the the work of the employees of the Town of Cumberland over the past year. This is the last meeting of 2020. And I think that we should recognize the the work by everyone. I think of the election. I think of the, just the the efforts to keep the town safe. And I can't think of anybody who hasn't put their hands to the oar and and pulled together. So a shout out to to everybody who's employed by the town. Hot felt, thank you. You know, you mentioned billboard and it's something came to my mind today. We've we've got this facility up there called the Fire Station, but it's it's more than just a fire station. It's, it also has a medical use to it. And so I've I've, you know, we see during the year, you know, what what's the fire danger? Extreme, low? And it might be helpful for us to post what the COVID danger is, you know? Just to, I was thinking, why not put something up? You know, how many, how many cases, active cases to the Town of Cumberland have this week? It just, we tend to lose sight of what, we just go about our business daily. And sometimes a slap in the face or or something that draws our attention to to operate in a more safe manner is is helpful. It's, we've got a guy that works with us, has been out in Colorado for a couple of weeks. He's coming back this weekend. So we had a discussion amongst ourselves, you know, okay, what do we do? Do we put him out in the garage and make him work out there where it's cold by himself? Or or make him come with a test? You know, okay, so I guess we'll make him come with a test and maybe we'll let him inside and work with us. But it's, you know, those sorts of things that kind of, we, a lot of times we take things for granted and and it's it's helpful to stay focused. And speaking about focus, my apologies to my two fellow Finance Committee members. I don't know what I was thinking. And Brenda, if you don't see me respond, please. I I have no excuse for my not being here. I'm I'm ashamed to say that I blew that off, so next year I'll do better.
Give me back that tin from school.
That's it.
Thanks, Bob. The, my update on the food pantry is that we had over eighty families that we helped out this recently. And I got to tell you, it's just, it's just a miracle the way things are going with the food pantry. And it's all because of the volunteers that we have. It's just, it's just simply amazing. That's all I have.
Just two quick things. Wanted to just give an exact update from the Communications Committee. So Eliza was able to to kind of get an official quote on the postcards with the survey. So the the cost, I think we've thrown out a number of like three grand. The actual cost is just under 1,800. So the postcards are about 360, about 367. And then the mailing service is another 1,400. And so, so again, coming in under what we expected. And our timing is to to mail those out mid-January, which does tee up, tee us up nicely, as Town Manager kind of noted, to then be able to get folks in the rhythm. And as the Social Justice Committee or or any part of the town or anyone that that hopefully kind of by starting in mid-January, we can then follow that up in February and kind of get a a monthly rhythm going with folks when it comes to kind of proactively soliciting feedback. And then the other I meant to mention, in our own town, I mentioned Freeport kicking off the 21-day anti-racism challenge. But Prince Memorial is starting a, I think it's a three or four-week workshop, which is Race Through the Lens of Fiction. And that's starting January 13th on Wednesday. So it's reading and some books there, young adult books. But it's open for for young adults as well as full adults. So just wanted folks to know that that that's out there, as well as you're kind of continuing your own journey. And Happy New Year.
Thank you, Allison. George?
Well, I'm always worried about whether I'm articulate about how I feel about a given situation. So I'm going to offer an an addendum basically to what my comments were having to do with the Social Justice Committee. And part of what kind of has informed my thought process for a lot of years was my father was a teacher and he taught it really briefly, but he taught in a lot of places. He was lauded by his students pretty universally. And his secret, basically, was that, in philosophy, was that a teacher should teach, a good teacher should teach young people how to think, not what to think. And that, so that philosophy sort of filters everything in my thinking. And vis a vis the Social Justice Committee, I think that the conclusion we ought to be looking for is that the process actually be instrumental in teaching more people how to think about the problems with their thought processes vis a vis biases and so on. And I think it's a distinction that's worth thinking about. Because there's a huge contingent of people really worried in this country about schools deciding in loco parentis really means taking the place of the parent. And parents ought to teach their children moral values. And I'm hoping that most parents think that the primary duty is to them to teach their kids morality, not the schools. And aside from that, Shirley, my wife, Chris, took our neighbor to see the trees in Freeport and the lights in Freeport. L beans just outdid themselves this year. It's incredible. And also, because I'm remiss oftentimes, I've got a hundred dollar bill for you, Tom, for the food pantry.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Ron?
Thank you, George, for your donation. I went off because I was hurrying to get it to this meeting tonight and forgot my wallet. So I'm going to have to double up next week. But it's a tough.
I was in your name anyway, Tom. I mean, Ron.
Thank you. It's a tough time of year. A lot of us have lost family members and friends over the year. I mean, there's several town employees and dear friends of all of us have passed away. And it's just a time of year to reflect on what we have and what people have lost. And it's been a tough year. We're very fortunate to live in the community that we live in. And I want to thank everybody for all of the gifts and Happy New Year. Hopefully, next year will be better than this year, so that's all I have.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
It is a great community. Do we have a motion for adjournment? Shirley? Mike? All in favor? Meeting is adjourned, thank you.